I'd like to call Monday, November 5th, 2018, Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District Board of Fire Commissioners Meeting to Order. Please rise for Chaplin Chitwood.
We'd like to pause for a moment of silence for six firemen across the nation that lost their lives this past month. Dear God, we come tonight and we give thanks to those that have given the sacrifice to help save and serve others, and we pray, Lord, that you'll be with the families of those who are experiencing this loss. Lord, we pray for protection for our own firefighters and their families, and you might watch over all of them. And, Lord, we thank you for those that lead and guide and direct. I pray that you might grant them wisdom and insight as we strive to be the best we can be to help the people of this community. It's in Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comment on agenda items this evening? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the October 8th, 2018 regular meeting minutes.
Make motion approve.
I'll second it. All favor.
Aye.
Approval of October 2018 financials and current expenditures and ACH payments, acknowledgment of financial report, acknowledgment of wire transfers and transfers between accounts, and also included in that is the pay application number seven. Need a motion to approve that.
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item, awards.
Yes, sir. We have two Phoenix Awards, and I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Chief Scott for the honors.
Good afternoon, everyone. So today, this afternoon, we have the honor of giving out two Phoenix Awards. So we had two so close together, as you know, we've been doing these pretty regularly through our board meetings, that we're running out of board meetings, so we have to start doubling up, which is a very good thing. So just as a reminder, for those of you who haven't been at one of these presentations before, the Phoenix Award is given to emergency responders who respond or run a call on someone that is, has no heart rate, no pulse, and no breathing. So clinically, they are deceased, expired. So without our intervention, without intervention at all, and in some cases, we have people that intervene as we do this evening or this afternoon, even before we get there, but without the intervention, that person would not survive. So we always like to take this opportunity to recognize that it is an example of what we all exist here for. We do many things here at the Fire Department, in many different types of rescues and assistance to people and protecting lives and property, but probably none of them are more evident than what we do on this very particular call, because these people would not be here. So the Phoenix is given to the first responders, and then we like to also take the opportunity, when these happen, to recognize people in the community that step up and administer care to them, and in, I think, every Phoenix Award we've done this year, I think we're on number eight, someone from the public, a bystander, a family member, has started chest compressions and CPR. It's the one thing in common on all of them. We have had, to my knowledge, zero survivors without it. So it's kind of a public education opportunity as well to spread the word that even though in both these calls, we got there in four minutes, probably without someone initiating that chest compressions and CPR, those people would not have survived. So, again, just that opportunity. Okay, so tonight, since we have two, I'm going to go through both the calls, and then I'll call everybody up, and we'll make the presentations instead of doing them separate. All right? So you guys just hold on and save all your applause until the end when we call everybody up to the front of the room. All right, so the first one was on July 29th, and it came in about 3:30 in the afternoon. It was truck 25. They arrived unseen about four minutes after the call, which is about our normal, and both these calls was four minutes. There was a family member doing chest compression, CPR, when we arrived, as I mentioned. So our crews took over treatment. Both of these, a couple of things they have in common, they, when we train for cardiac arrest, and we put our crews through all the different things that happen, and the different rhythms, and the medications that we give, and the airway, and the drugs, and all the things we have to, both of these calls went through almost every possible rhythm, I say problem, but the presentation changed through it. For instance, on both of these, they gave four or five epinephrine, they gave two to three amiodarone, these are different drugs for different types of rhythms that come up, and in both of them, they were defibrillated, I believe, two on one and three on the other, which means they were in a rhythm that could be changed from the non, you know, heart-producing rhythm they were in to one that they could survive from. So they both had those things in common. Shortly after we started care, Medic 13 showed up, and from Lee County EMS, we do run these calls in conjunction with them, and we work as a team, and both, that's why we invite Lee County EMS here as well. So about 15 to 20 minutes after arrival, and the crew's working on the first patient, we achieved ROSC on this patient, that's return of spontaneous circulation. On these calls, we remain unseen until we get a blood pressure, which is what returned ROSC means, and a pulse. So that's what we're doing. So we stay there for an extended period of time. We don't throw them in the ambulance and take off. The reason for that is we can't do effective care in the back of the ambulance. So we either stay unseen until we call for orders and the doctor says to stop our efforts, or we get them to where we can sustain life, and then we transport them to the hospital. And again, that happened on both of these calls. Okay, so we're going to move on to the second call. So they got ROSC, they transported to the hospital, one of our members jumped in the back of the Lee County EMS unit and went. The second call was on August 10th, 8:00 in the morning, very, very similar call. This was in the Home Depot, right here in town. So these things happen everywhere. They happen in the home, they happen in restaurants, they happen in public events. So again, family members, bystanders, coworkers, in this case, right? How important it is, no matter where you are, you could be faced with this, hopefully you don't, but it could present itself to you, and you could really make a difference. So please spread the word, I'll say it again, and let everybody know to learn CPR, we offer them here at the Fire Department, or anywhere you can go to get it, because you may actually save somebody's life, just like in these cases. Okay, so the first person I'd like to recognize was in the Home Depot call, we have a member in our audience that initiated care on a coworker, and when they walked in, she was doing CPR, and that person had a full recovery and survivor. So I'm going to start with her to call everybody up to the front of the room. And her name is Tamatha Chavez. If you'd come up at the front, Tamatha? Just come up, yeah, kind of right here in front of me. No one needs to see me, they want to see you. All right, and on the first call, with truck 25, we have Lieutenant Paramedic Gianvanti Zamora, if you'd come up. Firefighter EMT April Stafiri. I believe this is her first Phoenix Award here, she's one of our newer firefighters. Firefighter EMT Rob Schmidt. Firefighter EMT Alex Wright. And from Lee County EMS, Paramedic Jeffrey Lyon. And EMT, you've got to help me. Lorsent Ridge? Not here?
Lorsent, Rick Lorsent.
Oh, he's not here, okay. All right. If I didn't know that, I wouldn't butcher his name so bad. Okay, and on the second call, let's see, from Benita, we have Lieutenant Paramedic Adam Hughes. Firefighter EMT Jesse Cottrell. Firefighter Paramedic Brian Hornberger. Firefighter EMT Curtis Muir. Firefighter EMT Alicia O'Leary. And BC Paramedic Andy Schmidt. And, wait, sorry, sorry about my pause. Jeffrey, the paramedic, Jeffrey Lyon was on both of these calls, maybe you're the common denominator. You're the good luck charm, right? Okay. And also, we have EMT Andrew Fletcher, and EMT Dylan, we'll just leave it at Dylan. Okay, I think that's everybody. Now we can clap.
We can take a couple minute break here for anybody who'd like to not stay for the whole meeting, you're welcome to stay, but I know most people are here for the awards. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is commissioners' business. Start with Commissioner Murphy.
I want to thank everybody here for the past four years I've been able to have the privilege to serve as commissioner. It really has been a pleasure, great people to work with. I want to thank 3444 for their support in this election season, and if things don't turn out tomorrow, I'm going to just be so happy that I've had a chance to experience all of this, and if I can come back next month, it'll be even better. So that's it for tonight.
I don't have any, nothing.
Commissioner Fitzgerald?
I have a couple items. I had sent the chief a note during the last month in reference to requests that I made from BSU to provide some information about the hydrants in the district. The CEO over there, John Jenkins, he opted to write a letter to the mayor, and the chief, by the way, saying that Fitzgerald did not have the support of the board, therefore should not have requested the information, and secondly, he said that Fitzgerald's harassing him. Basically, I didn't get the information. So the reason I went to BSU is I asked it this board if we knew or could relay to me what neighborhoods in Benita Springs by district did not have hydrants according to code. And I was told BSU has that information, we don't have it, and that's why I wrote to them.
In all fairness, as a board, we have talked about this and voted on it, and come to every conclusion that if the fire marshal and the fire chief...
I think you should wait till I finish.
Well, as far as the BSU thing goes, I don't know where harassment starts, I'm not here to judge that, but we've discussed it, and I think as a consensus, and I'd like to confirm that right now, that the rest of the board feels that we're okay with the hydrants, correct? Am I correct? We voted on this before, so this issue should be put to bed.
This was not a question if we're okay and not okay. I wanted to find out what areas of Benita Springs do not have hydrants according to the code.
And the board there is I. As a board, it's a consensus, and the consensus is that it's only you that's looking for that information, and we need, we're not going to pursue this anymore.
You can't do that. You can't. You can't.
Commissioner Fitzgerald, this is a consensus of the people that you serve up here with...
You can't make the consensus a month after we have...
No, we've had this, we've done this now for two years, Commissioner Fitzgerald. If you want to look back, we can pull the records of how many times we voted on it, how many times we've met on it, how many times we've put the documentation out here. You just haven't got the answer that you like, but we have no issues.
No. Chief, I asked you, can you identify the areas of Benita Springs that are not properly provided with hydrants? And you said, no. You said, I know where every hydrant is, but you don't know what parts of the city do not have hydrants. We have two standards in Benita Springs. If you're in a gated community or in a new development order, you have hydrants according to code every 400, 600 feet. If you're an old Benita, no one knows. You don't know, of course, you didn't tell me, I don't know, and the city, the mayor of Benita Springs doesn't know.
The record will reflect that you have shown us that you have no issues, and I'm talking to the fire marshal, and I'm talking to the chief, that we don't have any issues getting water where we need to get water. I've been told that by you.
Again, it's not a question...
Yes, and we have discussed this as far as the code versus new construction and old construction.
Exactly.
On several occasions.
Exactly. So at the end of the day, Commissioner Fitzgerald, all due respect, we're going to put this to bed.
You can't put it to bed.
I just did, I just did. I'm going to call the meeting back to order. If you have something else you'd like to discuss this evening, then let's move on with it.
The change should acknowledge, was that what I asked you? What did I ask you was to write a le, have our attorney...
But you have no right to ask him to write a letter to an attorney without board consensus, and you do not have it, so please move on.
That is not true.
That is very true.
That is not true.
I don't know how to make it any clearer, more clear to you.
You're making rules in your own...
I'm not making rules. This is, this is a board, and we vote on things, and this isn't a one man band.
No.
And so please, and BSU doesn't want to hear it anymore, we are fine, we don't want to hear it anymore, and just write it off as one of those things that you just didn't win.
It's not a question of me winning, it's a question...
Mr. Chairman, please move on.
I'm trying, and I don't want to have to call the recess and start over, but Commissioner Fitzgerald, out of respect for the rest of the board, please move on to your next item.
No, I can't move on. I have to tell you, that's not what I asked...
You're out of line. You want to ask for a recess.
Yep, we're going to take a five minute recess here until you think this over, because you're out of line.
Contacting Terry Lewis myself, or my own attorney.
Let's bring the meeting back to order.
Okay. Item two. Move on.
Yeah, we're live.
The second thing was in the email I sent to the chief, is that last month, I was advised that members of this board were going out to Pierce Manufacturing Company, on what reason, I don't know, it was never brought to the board, so I don't know why you went. I don't know who went, but I asked about it, and I was concerned, did we pay for this or not? Chief told me, no. Pierce Manufacturing paid for the whole trip for whoever went, I'm not positive who went. I checked on that. That is a violation of the ethics code, going, having vendors pay for or make gifts to...
First of all, it's in a budget item on every truck, and when we sign checks for as much money as we sign checks for, we have, depending on whether it's a ladder truck or an engine truck, or an engine, there's either two or three trips that are built into the cost of the truck. I think that the chief will probably back this up. I believe that Pierce, just 10-8, the company that we use here locally, that covers all of Florida and, I think, South Georgia, they sponsored 120 of these trips, 120 trips from different fire departments on going up to look at the, to look at the vehicles, because when we write checks for anywhere from a half a million to a million dollars, there's some things that go into the, into the building and approving through a process. Everything is built in on a line item in the contract for every truck, they budget that amount of money, and they pay the expense, it's part of the expense of buying a truck. And it is not a violation of the ethics code. They do this from all over the country, all over the world, and they've done 120 of them in 2018, just in Florida, for the trucks that they've sold. We've had, we've had, this is, this has never even hit anybody's radar, because there's nothing illegal or unethical or hidden or anything about it. It's just, would you spend a half a million dollars for something, and put your name on the check and sign it, and not go look at it before you took delivery of it to make sure it was okay? I ask you that in all fairness.
I didn't ask you the question, I asked the chief the question, by the way.
Well, then I can have the chief answer it.
I feel like I'm debating with you. I looked up the code section, and I called the ethics code, and they tell me having the commissioner go out to the vendor is a violation of ethics code. That was all. I asked you to contact Terry Lewis and determine whether that was true or not. Predicated on what Terry Lewis would tell me, maybe we just end the whole thing, but maybe Terry Lewis might have told me what the commissioner of Love Island told me, some explanation.
This has been going on for every truck that was ever purchased in Benita, even when you were here longer than me. It's been going on for, I've been here 10 years, and it's been going on, you guys should probably tell me better than before my tenure, but...
If I may, Chairman.
Yes, please.
We looked into this, Commissioner Fitzgerald, as you requested. So we talked to 10-8, which the chairman said, which is the only exclusive manufacturer for Pierce Fire Engines and Trucks in Florida and South Georgia, as he mentioned, and I believe they're like the largest manufacturer in the country. So in 2018, we asked for their records. They had 121 fire trucks built, which included, and I'll read the language here, as you can see, the majority of apparatus sold includes two trips to the factory. In looking at the data, almost all apparatus that utilize three trips are for complex vehicles such as aerial trucks, which are ladder trucks, and heavy rescue. Single trips are mostly used for final inspection for commercial vehicles and pre-construction meetings held at the department's location. So in 2018, they did 121 trucks. How many of those trucks had their staff and their board go to? Zero was zero. Not one fire agency out of 121 trucks did not go to inspect their vehicles under their contract with 10-8. In 2017, it was 132, then 124 in 2016. So the reason why I mention that is because I want you to feel comfortable, but this is a practice that is done by the largest manufacturer of fire trucks, Pierce Fire Trucks, in Florida and in Georgia. Now, if the board would like me to get a confirmation from Terry Lewis, I will certainly do so, but in the vein of saving the district some money, I figured we could do some of the investigations ourselves prior to having attorney's fees paid for something that we know is common practice throughout.
The Ethics Bureau thought it was a violation. I thought it was a violation, and you're telling me it's not. I would have appreciated, and I still appreciate, if Terry Lewis, our attorney, would do that. Now, you're saying people go out there, you buy a truck, you're entitled to have X amount of people come out and look at the truck. Are these commissioners, we have...
Yes, sir, there are various people. I would, I would ask the commissioner for certain, if you could give me a copy of that ethics report so I can send it to Terry Lewis, which says it's unethical, that would help.
I'll get you the copy. By the way, where do I get this copy from? There's a thing called the Florida Special Districts Handbook. It is an online service for commissioners. I don't think it was ever given out to anybody on this board, but it has, it has a link, it's 173 pages of information about the special districts, how they should operate, and that's one of the questions in there. So...
My understanding of the law is if the salesman from Pierce, before you've signed the contract, comes around and decides to take you on a trip and send you and your wife to Disney on vacation, and wines and dines you, so you will buy a truck from Pierce, that is illegal. Once you've specified and determined what the building of the truck is, you have, and it's built into the price of the contract and a line item in the contract, to inspect A halfway through or three quarters of the way through, whatever it's deemed necessary to look, to make sure that everything is being built to specifications, and a final inspection. And it's very commonplace, it's done with every truck, and the reason for that is when you're spending that kind of money, you're not going to have somebody send you some photographs and say, here it is, we're going, now we're going to drive it down to you, and once it leaves that plant in Wisconsin, it's very difficult to get it back there to have something done. So that's why people go there to make sure that it's built to specs.
And I do think the critical point, to your point, Chairman, is that essentially, we paid for the trip, because it's part of the contract, and it's included in the truck. So essentially... So, essentially, Pierce does not buy us the trips. They include that in the purchase of every fire truck.
You were the one who told me, Chief, that there was no expense to the district, that Pierce paid for the whole thing.
What comes out of the...
That's true.
That is true.
When I say there's no cost to the district, because that's included in the cost of the fire trucks, so when you...
If it were a district item, it should have been presented to this board. We should have voted on it. Somebody, if we wanted to, we could have found out if it was ethical. Not ethical, somebody could have gone. I wonder why it was done secretively.
It was not, because you approved the purchase of the fire truck.
I approved the purchase of the fire truck.
Yes, sir.
So, I approved, I approved the trip also.
Absolutely.
I disagree. I, we have an attorney, and we have a code section, and we have a question. Why don't we just give it to them? Let us give us an answer. I don't like the answer.
You have a consensus for that.
That's the end of it. Right now, I'm not happy with it. And I know that this is supposed to be a collegial organization. We're supposed to work together and agree on things for the benefit of the resident.
Do we have a consensus to send a letter to Terry Lewis on this issue? You think you want to send a letter?
If it puts us to rest, yeah. But do you have...
What does that cost us each time we...
Well, do we have a consensus?
I say nay.
No, negative.
I don't see it necessary either, but, so we don't have a consensus. If you want to file an ethics complaint on them and have them do the, do the legwork and check into it at their expense, that's fine. But there's no ethic, there's no, nothing here that is unethical in any way, shape, or form. Do you have anything else this evening?
I'm going to finish with this. I'm very disappointed with the board, to be honest with you, that they wouldn't want to find out if it's an ethics violation or not. They don't seem to care. If I bring it up, it's got to be wrong. And the hydrant issue, we don't know the status and the condition...
Do you have anything else this evening?
...in this city, and we're all happy about it. I don't think the mayor would be happy.
Commissioner, do you have anything else?
I'm finished, yes. Okay.
Commissioner Maturio?
I'd like to just say to Commissioner Murphy, it's been a pleasure working with you. Good luck in the election.
Thank you, sir.
And also, to the chief, recently, I took my daughter to a function at one of the local churches, and the fire district had firemen stationed there with the truck for the kids to look at and stuff. They were professional, they were polite, and they were wonderful ambassadors for the district. I was really impressed, having, having worked for an organization myself. They really portrayed themselves and came off, they looked great, they sounded great, they were great with the kids. It was, I was really proud to be part of this organization in some manner and form, because they really were squared away. And I think that's attributed to the leadership here from you and your administration. Nice job.
Thank you, sir.
I have nothing this evening. Any old business? Anybody have anything under old business?
I have. I brought up the issue of 10 weeks vacation, and I met some residents, and the residents I met was from this board, who said it's not 10 weeks. It's not, it's different. They work 24 hours and they, it's not. Fitzgerald, you don't know what you're talking about. So, anyway, I think we tabled the discussion, so we end the discussion. I just brought you a little chart. I wanted you to see how I came up with the 10 weeks. And there's, there's a copy of the January and February 2019 calendar...
Mr. Chairman, can we move on? We've, this has been hashed, rehashed, done over. I think it's...
Well, apparently, apparently, I've tried to move on, but apparently, Commissioner Fitzgerald moves on when he wants to. He brings up the same thing every month, every month, every month.
I think you should be ashamed of yourself, every one of you.
I don't appreciate being degraded, please.
You should be ashamed of yourself.
I don't appreciate that, Mr. Fitzgerald.
I don't think you appreciate it not.
Well, I take exception to it, so please move on.
Looking into the, with due diligence, what's going on in this district.
You and I both know it is not true. We're both firefighters. We worked shifts, we did the same thing these gentlemen do, and they weren't, we didn't get paid for vacation. You're misreading what it is, and you just won't let it go. Please move on.
Should be ashamed of yourself, Chief.
Whatever.
Okay.
Any other old business? Okay, under the next item is new business. I need a motion for the disposal of assets report.
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is Station 23, change order number 11. I need a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. CPR policy fees, I need a motion to approve the new fees.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Question?
Discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we are stating here that residents of Benita Springs will have one fee, and non-residents will have a different fee. I would ask that all residents of Pelican Landing receive the resident fee. Recently, Pelican Landing has been divided into two different villages and cities, Estero and Benita, and in the past, they were always included as part of Benita Springs. They're part of our CERT team, and I would ask that we make that exception, as it has been in the past. Include all residents of Pelican Landing as part of, and make that amendment to this motion.
Does anybody have an issue with that? I mean, it makes sense to me, but is that hard for...
We need a second time on that.
We can't, we can't motion it. But we, oh yeah, we can. I'm sorry, I take that back. We can, we can have an amended motion. Yeah, we got to withdraw the, withdraw the first motion and do an amended motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we change the fee structure.
That will entertain your motion after we're taking care of one that's on the floor right now.
I second his motion for to include...
So, the motion, the way I understand it, is that we're going to include any resident of Pelican Landing as a resident of Benita, even if geographically they're across the line into Estero. Okay, so that's, okay. So, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. No? Okay. So, what was your motion?
My motion is that the...
It has to be on the agenda, so...
It's on this, yep. On this fee structure. At Benita Springs residents, $20 for CPR training. My motion, let me finish the whole thing, should be no fee for Benita Springs residents to have CPR training conducted by this department. Non-Benita Springs residents, maybe 20 bucks.
We discussed this at a budget meeting, so now this is in the budget, so we would not be able to do that until the following year, because we've figured in that money into the budget.
I think we were voting on this, weren't we?
No.
He made a recommendation to change it. I make a recommendation, it's no good.
No.
You've got to be kidding.
No. The only thing that was changed, the fees didn't change from, in that agreement. It was just some of the wording changed. The fees are exactly the same as they were last year.
They were supposed to, Pelican Landing people were supposed to pay 40, now they're paying 20. Change the fee.
No, no. Pelican Landing, 90, 95% of Pelican Landing people are in Benita, and there's less than, probably less than 5% that's outside the city.
Pelican Landing was considered one community and has always paid as residents, and this would exclude part of Pelican Landing unless we make the exception to include them as they have been in the past.
All right. The next item is the Lee County EMS lease agreement. Need a motion to accept that?
I move.
I cannot believe...
I'll second.
You should be ashamed of yourself.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is Chief Daigle's report.
The only thing I have, gentlemen, is I wanted to thank Chief Ben Abes for his help with coming to the agreement from EMS with this, with this new contract that we have. We have not had a contract in the past, and as the board directed, it remains our price, and our fees remain the same. So, I wanted to thank him for his work to make sure that this came together as partners in the life-saving business, so. And thank you, board, for allowing me to continue with the negotiations.
Well, nice job.
Thank you, Chief.
Do you have anything else, Chief?
No, sir.
Assistant Chief DeWitt? Deputy Chief Scott?
No, sir.
And we have Deputy Chiefs Madden report. Nice job. Any public comment? Motion to adjourn?
I move.